Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is a regular commission meeting Wednesday, July 5th, 2017 at 7:44. For the invocation, Chief, can you please rise?
Dear God, tonight we thank you for your presence in both our hearts and in our lives for the many blessings that you bestow upon our city, our residents, our employees, and elected officials. We pray for unity and peace and leadership in our great country. Tonight, we pray also for the family of yet another law enforcement officer who's lost her life in New York City in another senseless shooting, and we ask for your comfort in their family. We pray for our firefighters so they may continue to protect and serve our community by saving lives and property. We pray for all our law enforcement officers and military personnel as they do their most challenging job, and pray that they return home safely. This evening, we especially pray for one of our own officers who lost a sister over the weekend, Officer Yarrow. He mourns his loss, and we join him in his mourning and his prayer. He's survived by several other siblings and children of her own. May the family find resolve and comfort, and may his faith continue to be a source of peace throughout this difficult moment. We ask this, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Captain, for the pledge of allegiance. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suárez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First of all, before we continue with the agenda, I'm a little bit overwhelmed with the representation from the Fire Department here tonight. It's really an honor to have you present. Also, today, we have with us Oliver Gilbert, which is the new president of the Miami-Dade League of Cities. Thank you for coming to our city. Okay? With that, we can go right into Item 4.
Item 4, Presentation of Minutes for Approval for June 21st, 2017 Regular City Commission Meeting.
Motion, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We also found a representative from the City of Doral, Mr. Gustavo Gargori.
How can I forget? I'm sorry.
He's the office, he's the Assistant Chief of Staff of Vice Mayor P. Carrera.
Thank you. You see, that's why we have an attorney. Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I would like to take some items out of order, and with, I have a question. Do you want to weigh Mr. Gilbert for Mr. Cooper, or?
No.
You can go. Okay.
He's the president of the league. He's the boss.
Well, but he might want the attorney present.
The important ones.
Okay, so item, that will be Item A.
Yes, on Item A, under Special Presentations, Item A8A, Presentation by Miami-Dade County League of Cities President Oliver Gilbert III and Miami-Dade County League of Cities Executive Director Richard Cooper.
Please approach the podium. State your name for the record and address, just to keep the lieu.
Oliver Gilbert, 18605 Northwest 27th Avenue in Miami Gardens, Florida. I am the mayor of Miami Gardens. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my good friend, thank you all for having me. And while I, you know, have this many first responders here, thank you all for your service. If no one else ever tells you, if you don't hear, not just from me, but from my residents and from all the cities that I represent, we appreciate you. We understand that you walk into danger when people are running, and you offer assistance when we are incapable of helping ourselves. And so sometimes, people don't have the opportunity to really just say, "Thank you. I appreciate all of our first responders" in so many ways, because we take for granted their service. We do. When I became the president of the Dade League of Cities, what I said is I was going to visit every city. I'm going to visit every city, because what had occurred to me was, you know, we're a big county. We're a big county, and we're a diverse county, and we have big cities and middle-sized cities and small cities, and we have villages, and we have towns. We speak different languages, but we're all saying the same things. We need good transportation, safe streets, economic development. We need a county that actually works for the people who live here, and not just the people who visit here. I understand that the brand is Miami, and the picture is Miami Beach, but the people live in West Miami. The people live in Miami Gardens. They live in El Portal. They live in High Aaliyah. They live in places that people might not visit. And we have to do a better job of understanding and articulating the fact that the issues that West Miami has, even if I don't know what they are, they're Miami Gardens issues. Miami Gardens issues are adventure issues. Adventure issues are homestead issues. Whether it be Dolphin Stadium or the agricultural area down south, the League of Cities is positioned to speak for the interest of cities. And how I identify that interest as your president, and I say "your president," is that it matters to me. It matters to me, beach erosion matters to me, even though I don't have a coastline. The roadways going to the airport matters to me, even though they don't border my city. We have to do a better job of identifying each other's problems as everyone's problems. And that's my goal in refocusing us this year as the Dade League of Cities. I want to visit you and let you know that I'm your president, and Richard, I think there was a communication snafu, but Richard is your executive director. He's an extraordinary executive director. Our staff is good and knowledgeable, and if they don't have the information, they can find people who have the information. Please feel free to use them. Reach out to them. Reach out to me. If you have issues going before the county, reach out to me, because we will advocate for you in any way we possibly can. We're going to take this exact same message to every city, big and small, because from my perspective, there are no big and small cities in Dade County. There aren't any cities. There's just residents, and we represent them all. They all want the same thing, the same opportunity for their kids in education, the same safety, the same transportation, the same businesses, the same economic development. They want the same things. We just have to figure out the best way to get it to them. So, thank you for your all time, and happy belated 4th of July, happy 5th of July.
Thank you.
You know, the day after their birthday, they were probably still hungover. So, yeah, happy 5th of July. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
With that, I also would like to take another item out of order, and that will be Item
11C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C, this is a presentation of proclamation to Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Captain Roman Bass for his retirement after three decades of service. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, allow me a couple of words.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
First of all, not only the recognition from, we're very proud of this, because we're talking about a resident of the City of West Miami for many years, his family, resident of West Miami for many years, on 58 between 12 and 13. With that, I mean, they live in an impeccable home, and to that, that's important to us. That adds quality of life to our city. And we're very proud that you're here today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Blanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those moments that is actually pleasant and worry-free to sit here and speak. One of those joyful moments, I'm sure we can all agree. And I'm sure that it gives us all a great pleasure to recognize Captain Roman Bass, one of our own, son here of the City of West Miami. I don't know where to start. Roman has an extensive career. I have his resume here in front of me, and I'd like to touch upon just some of the things that distinguishes him. He's had a very illustrious career, 30 years of service. And I tell you, on a personal note, I know that 30 years of service to the community takes a lot of commitment and a lot of sacrifice. I personally can attest to that. So, my hat's off to you, Captain. So, I would like to just touch upon and say some things about Captain Bass. Captain Bass was the PIO, Public Information Officer, for Miami-Dade County Fire Department for many years, and that is a very important position. It requires an incredible communication skills and, you know, saying the right thing at the right time. It's critical. And representing the second biggest fire department in the nation, am I right, second? Or number one? Second. Second fire, second, right. Second biggest fire department in the nation. Let's see here. He was involved with the fire prevention, developed and implemented public education safety programs to the general public, developed many liaison, community-based programs in that regard. Also, the motorcycle emergency response team, he led that up. This was something that I believe our Commissioner, District 6 Commissioner Sosa, was, I believe it was her project, right? And you and her worked together? And that was obtaining motorcycles and equipping motorcycles with EMS service to use at big gatherings where they needed to, where there are no roads leading to where the emergency might be, and so these motorcycles could be used. And Captain Bass put this program together, the whole, as we say, the whole nine yards. So, that's very commendable. I would like to mention also that Captain Bass responded to the 9/11 World Trade Center aftermath. Let me tell you, I didn't go, but I've heard firsthand accounts of the horrible trauma that was experienced there by our first responders. So, I can just imagine what kinds of experiences he's had with that endeavor. Colombian earthquake, I didn't know Colombia had an earthquake. In 1999, he responded there too. So, this was actually out of the country, out of our, out of our, out of our state, out of our country. Captain was deployed by FEMA, Emergency Information and Public Affairs, to serve as a member of the Incident Support Team in upstate New York following a major storm and flooding in the Northeast. And on and on. And all the while, being assigned to these special temporary positions throughout his career interspersed with this was actually the service of saving lives, riding on a rescue unit, riding on a fire suppression unit, a pumper or an aerial. He's done it all. And I would like to mention here also some of the awards that Captain Bass has received. Firefighter of the Year, Kendall Federation Homeowners Association. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Employee of the Year, 2005. That's very commendable. Miami-Dade County Manager's Office Public Safety Award. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Medal of Valor. I didn't get one of those. I deserved one or two, by the way. Anyways, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Life Saving, three. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Exceptional Service Award, three. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Unit Citation Award, three. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Major Campaign Award, five. And State of Florida EMS Award, 10. I imagine those were the ACLS, the Klingcon competitions? Anyways, I can go on and on and on, but I tell you, 30 years of service to the community in the fire service is something that takes a lot of commitment, a lot of sacrifice, not just to the person, but to the family. So, with all that said, and I'm sure I'm leaving things out, it gives us a great honor and a pleasure to be able to recognize you today. So, with that said, did I miss anything? You know what? I would like to recognize some of our brothers here. I have their names, and if maybe you can just raise your hand. Alfonso Camargo, all right. Evelio Naval, AKA Soyla. That's another, that's another story for another day. I'll let you guys, I'll fill you in, you guys, on that one. Your Exis Machine. Scott Saldivar. Javier Duarte. Richard Ramos. Jimmy Moreno. Danny Perez. Luigi Rotonini, Rotondi. Sounds like a pasta. You got a pizza place? Should open one up. Front axle. Axle font. God, I'm a little dyslexic, I'm sorry. Axle font. I don't know how I got a front axle. Charlie Garcia. Charlie? Charlie's not here? Division Chief George Mara. He's on a coffee break. And Battalion Chief John Mayek. Thank you, Chief, for coming. Thank you. And I thank you all, brothers, for coming and recognizing Captain Bass. And if any of you want to give a story and accounting of something memorable, you can, you're welcome to come up and.
Commissioner, if I may, Mr. Mayor? If I may, I want to add something. I've known Roman and his family for a long time. I was raised right around the corner from Roman's mom and dad's house, and I have tremendous respect, admiration, and I love your family, and obviously, that extends to you as well. But I don't think we can forget to mention Roman's help and the resources that he made available to the city when West Miami used to flood. For some of you guys that are working next door now, assigned to Rescue 40, you may not know the horror stories that our city residents had to endure because of the drainage situation that was later corrected, fortunately, thanks to the work of the Commission and Commissioner Sosa and all those who played a major role with the flooding situation. But Roman helped out a lot. He brought a lot of resources to the city. He actually helped bring out residents from areas that were houses, you had, you would enter inside the house, and the water was knee-high. So, I, as a resident of the city, I thank you for that, and I will never forget. So, thank you for your service, your honorable service, Roman.
And I will also, yes. More especially, I would like to recognize my friend, my neighbor, Roman Bass Senior, and his wife, Mrs. Bass, his beautiful daughter, and Rosa, is it Rosa?
Conchita.
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 I'm horrible with names. I should, you know, being a politician, I should remember names. But, so, they are my neighbors too, and almost 33 years now. Time flies when you're having fun. And.
I know.
Great family, great residents, and great friends.
Anybody else wants to, anybody else wants to say anything, add to it? Okay, well, we got to come forward. Please come.
I'm in.
Keep going. I got you covered.
That was very good.
And now, it would be a great distinct pleasure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an extremely honored, I'll present to you this proclamation from the City of West Miami, from the mayor, from the Commissioner, from every single resident of this city. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas, the mayor, the city, and the city commissioner of the City of West Miami, on this great occasion, proudly recognize the retirement of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Captain Roman E. Bass. And whereas, the city of West Miami, eloquent and knowledgeable, Captain Roman E. Bass, in an effort for underprivileged admiration for his dedication to public service, his valid compassion, and exemplary commitment to fire and rescue, with over three decades of service, and for making up the many unsafe sites, saving lives, and protecting property. Now, therefore, here it's all, I, Mayor Juan E. Blanca, Commissioner Juan Blanes, and always the best of latter, Luciano L. Suarez, recognize Roman E. Bass in the City of West Miami. In witness word, I have here on you, set my hand across the seal of the City of West Miami, to be at fix this 5th of July, being year of our Lord, 2017."
Father, mother.
And Conchita.
Conchita. Not Rosa, not Rosa, Conchita. See?
Congratulations, Father.
Congratulations, Father.
All you guys.
Soyla.
Felicidades.
Si, lo que pasa es.
Y nos han pedido para acá, para terminar su carrera aquí, donde él empezó.
No, no.
No, no.
La llave de mente no vi nadie.
Bueno, la agenda trae, trae chavos.
La llave no viene.
Oye, pero está muy bien, Torejo, tú ya le vas a decir, le voy a decir todavía, no.
You're always in the mood, July.
Yes.
You're always a fire.
I know.
You're always a fire.
Firecracker.
Firecracker, fireworks.
Smile, please.
We should be celebrating, I really should.
Forget the more than.
Thank you.
What the?
Today, sometimes, I'm surprised that.
I opened it, and I had to read it again, and I read it again, and it's like, oh.
Bienvenido.
Tenemos bien.
Sorry.
Okay.
Tenemos, invitamos, invitamos a los dos.
No, pero si no sale lejos, entró.
El primero que lo decía yo.
I was like, I don't make.
And all people, I took that by seeing my.
I didn't know, and supposedly, they were my victims.
En cambio, las llaves se lo pasó por.
Que eso tiene perdido como su, si se habrá probado, y si no había pasado a la par.
No, 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 no,[1303.23] In witness word of I have here on you, set my hand across the seal of the City of West Miami to be our fix this fifth day of July, being year of our Lord, 2017."
Father, mother. Conchita, not Rosa, not Rosa, Conchita. Sí. Felicidades.
You're always in the mood to like.
Yes.
You're, oye, you are always a firework. You're always a firework. No, they were saying, but you're always a firework.
Firecracker. Firecracker fireworks.
Smile please.
I'm surprised that, I opened it, and I had to read it again, and I read it again.
No, pero si no sale lejos dentro.
El primero que lo decía yo.
Venía apoyado.
The wrong message.
Esta es la resolución muy guay. Entiende eso? La resolución es que se va a hoy hoy. Eso es muy guay.
Bueno, muchas felicidades. Se retiró también, se la pone así, ya, ha retirado. Hace tres años se retiró, así que lo mandan para tu de, como vengo yo. Juan, ayúdame a que la señora Blanca. Gusto en bello, danle más bien, cuidense mucho. My friend, ahorita estoy en el estudio. Felicidades.
No, no, está muy callado, pues tienes, ah, no, nada.
Aquí estoy.
Aquí me quedo.
No, no, no.
Claro que sí. Claro que sí. Ande a tirar una foto with my friend. Here's one, Conny, mi gran amigo.
Gustavo.
Gustavo.
Se lo voy a medio, porque ahí no puede ser nada.
Sí, no, creo que no la vi, no, no, ya lo ya, voy a recordar el que yo. A la web, porque si no, me pregunta, pues, y no le vale respuesta.
De llamamos para la próxima, llamamos, robamos. De llamamos para la próxima, eh, no, de para. Oye, he's gonna have a lot of time on his hands.
Por eso.
Mayor, podemos ponerlo en, ahí, donde los auditorios, eh, very second. Jerry, Jerry, Jerry. Jerry. Jerry, Jerry, Jerry. Jerry, every time I get one of these emails from the state, holy, call Jerry. You saw what I said back there. I think they're okay.
Commissioner Suarez, to the table. Commissioner Suarez, to the table.
Code red.
Code blue, code blue, to the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, code red. Who was to say that? Who was to say, thank you very much? Oh, Elvis, Elvis, thank you very much. So I call you Elvis Presley, thank you very much.
Okay, we're back. Madam Clerk, can you guide us on the order of the agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the City Manager has recommended to take Item 11D and DNE, and I agree. So can we take it?
Okay.
Item 11D. This is a proposal for independent auditing service from Rodriguez Trueva and Company for period commencing October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2022. This is by Rodriguez Trueva and Company.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you have.
We have Jerry Donates, partner with the firm of Rodriguez Trueva and Company, our independent auditors.
Good evening, Mayor, and Commissioners, and City Clerk, City Manager, City Attorney. Thank you, first of all, for the opportunity. You should have there with you, we submitted a proposal for another five years to do the engagement, the audit engagement of the city's audit. First of all, just, ever since I started working with Rodriguez Trueva and Company, I've, not every year, but I was somewhat involved as a staff and grew with the company, and it was always a pleasure, you know, coming to the city here in West Miami and just trying to, you know, do our service and help the city out with its financial audit and things like that, and write any recommendations and so forth. But it's always a pleasure to come here, everyone's always treated us greatly, so just thank you again. And like I said, it's just another proposal for another five years. Fiscal year's ending 9/30/18, September 30th, 2018, through September 30th, 2022. So please consider that, and thanks again. And thank you again, too, always to the City Manager and Finance Director, who's not here, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason why, and you probably are thinking, why does this come to us so early? Is because obviously we have to entertain the proposal for next year's budget, 2017, 2018. And so we recommend that anything that has or is a financial impact moving forward that affects next year's budget, and maybe three, four years down the road thereafter, should be entertained and should be approved by the commission so that we know ahead of time what we have to include in the budget. And so that's the reason why it's here. Because their audit, their engagement letter takes us through the review process and the submittal of the financial statements for year ending September 30th of this year.
Correct.
So my recommendation, and I've discussed this with Mrs. Leon as well, we recommend that the Mayor and City Commission entertain a minimum of three years or, as presented, a five-year contract with Rodriguez Trueva. They not only service with the audit function, they service us year-round. As a matter of fact, there have been some issues back and forth with the state of Florida and the Chief Financial Officer's Office in the state of Florida on some of our CAFERS and some other long-term debt service and a present audit by Miami-Dade County Office of PTP. And so they're available to us. Their fee is inclusive of our year-round communications with our auditors. So we recommend that you engage their services as presented.
I have a question for the City Attorney. Have you had a chance to review the proposal?
Yes, I have.
Yes, you have. Okay, any other further question?
I'd like to comment some points about this. Rodriguez Trueva, for us in the table and the viewers, is one of the most high reputation auditing company in the area. And not only because you are here and you have a serious face, but because it's a very serious company, very professional, and the reputation and the experience they have is one of the best in the county. So my personal opinion is that we should do it that way, yes. Very serious people and very professional. We are lucky, as a small city, to have very high people like them with us.
Commissioner Suarez, I concur with you, not only serious, but I, probably some of us might forget the history, but I don't. They have rendered the service for many years. We have followed their advice, and they have been right on point every time. Every time we follow their advice, we come out as a winner. Furthermore, I know many times where you hold the price on your service due to the financial situations that we had, and they did that for many times, and we appreciate that. They're always there anytime we call on them. And like Commissioner Suarez, it's not only the reputation, but it's, the reputation is, good news takes a long time to spread. Bad news spreads very quickly. And they have earned every step of the way, and I concur. If legal department recommends it, and also the staff recommends it, I'm on board, so.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I, I'm sorry, if I may.
No, no, go ahead, ma'am.
In my meeting with staff, staff spoke very, 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 very highly of you.
Thank you.
Your expertise, your time with us, as is being stated here. What I'd like to know are the, I understand we're looking at either a three- or five-year contract, so what I'd like to know from staff, or maybe the City Attorney, the pros and cons of a three-year versus a five-year?
Well, the proposal, the five years give us continuity, and that's the greatest advantage because you know that I am a firm believer of institutional knowledge. And five years adds to the existing relationship, the institutional knowledge that Rodriguez, Trueva, and city staff bring to the table. They are an extension of our family here, and I want to say our senior staff family because they work very closely with Rita, with Mercedes, with Anari, with my office, and the Department Directors on matters pertaining to the city. They, there's always, they have a leverage, if you want to say, because they know the history, they know our fixed assets, they know our trial balances, they know what's in our designated accruals. We call them, and they don't need to go look for the information. So the benefit of having the institutional knowledge is priceless. And so the three-year versus the five, I think both proposals should be considered. However, the five-year is their request, and I would recommend that we honor that request from the auditors. We have to plan for the future and continue this relationship, which is a win-win situation for the city and for Rodriguez Trueva.
Does the difference in the contract affect the fee?
No, the fee is a $58,000 proposal with, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, and it has a built-in factor for Consumer Price Index, which is a cost of life as published by the Department of Labor for the goods and services that they provide to the city.
So the CPI would take effect in what year?
2019.
Right, the second year.
So for the first and second year, it's 58, and then years four and five is plus CPI.
I believe so, yes. I'm not sure.
I will tell you right now.
Check that, please.
I will tell you, if you give me one second, I will answer that. Yes, the first two years are capped, their fees will not exceed $58,000, and then they have a CPI adjustment for years subsequent, 2019 through 2022, which would be the end of this, of this cycle, of this engagement with the auditors.
Mr. Attorney, any pros or cons for us three to five?
As a matter of fact, I would recommend that. You see, it's always very hard and very expensive to teach new people to come and do a job. I just had the experience of having my own personal computer. I had to call a new technician, because my technician was out of the country, and he learned during my hours, and I had to pay him for the time that he learned. So I assure you that should you retain the services of somebody else, it would take two, three, four years for them to learn the system, how it's work, and so on and so forth. These people come, and they already know where to find, even the skeletons of the closet.
Absolutely, they know what they're looking for.
It's our benefit to go with five.
My strong recommendation to the manager when I read the contract is to recommend the five years, because I think that, and the words are institutional knowledge.
Okay.
I don't think that you would find anybody best in Miami-Dade County, even if you had to hire him new.
Okay.
So I think that this is the best that you could find, and their reputation is impeccable all throughout Florida.
Works for me.
And here's the other one, I'll throw a crazy one on board. We here are elected officials, and we could be here today or not.
Correct, correct.
And we have a sound commission right now, but we can have a crazy commission after us, and they're on board, and that shows the stability on the city.
Very good.
Financial stability.
And I want to add something. I think we should be lucky that this company, company like this, you know, present to us this position to have five years contract with them, because we will be secure in their hands. That, for me, is a plus. We're very lucky, they agreed to be with us five years, because not only they know our system, they know everything, they know the state, they know all the things in the professional business, and they are all day, they up-to-date all the things, and they know what to do in the moment that the crisis come.
I guess I should ask Jerry, what don't you know? Let's make the list short, what don't you know?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
We're lucky, we're lucky that.
Any further questions?
I have, I have some, something to say.
Remember, we got to read the resolution before anybody makes a motion.
Yeah, on a personal note, I wanted to say that I've known Carlos Trueva for many, many, many years. And to my knowledge, he is a man of character, integrity, you know, and he lives by that. It's his word, it's his integrity. He's got a great company, he has great employees, and you know, the scope of his work and the value of his work, that's what, that's what he stands by and for. And like Commissioner Suarez said, we should, we're lucky that we have such a firm auditing us and keeping our books, you know, and like the mayor said, every single suggestion, direction that they've given us has been the right one. And we are where we are today because of, because of their direction. You know, we've done exactly more or less tweak here and there, but we've done more or less exactly what they've recommended, so I concur with everyone.
Jerry, Commissioner Suarez is so excited to vote, he spilled water earlier.
And she was going to spill water on me just now.
Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Item 11E, Resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute Professional Engagement Letter for auditing the city's financial statements for fiscal years ending September 30th, 2018, through 2022, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you for all the kind words also about, you know, me and the company and Ricardo's and everything, I'll pass that along to him.
Call Carlos on your way home and tell him.
Thank you so much, thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? I believe I have another request to take another item out of order.
There are two items that I'd like to call out of order, Your Honor. One is the item that already went out for the first hearing, and that would be the Item 12, I'm sorry, 11B. A second reading of the public hearing ordinance, the Mayor City Commission ratified. 11B, a second reading of the public hearing ordinance, the Mayor City Commission, ratifying reaffirming ordinance 2015-01. Let me tell you before I go, this is something that was left out. It was an error by the surveyor. We're just correcting a surveyor's mistake. When this area was vacated by the City of West Miami, it was vacated, leaving a slit, a corner of about 25 feet. And what we're doing in 11B is just correcting that mistake. But I'd like to go to the resolution that we have on the marijuana issue, which is...
Can we take one at a time and vote on it?
Well, let me, let me do this, Mr. Mayor, because I really have a problem at home, and I really have to go.
Okay, all right.
You want to read the marijuana resolution?
The marijuana resolution. Okay, there are two items related to that. Item M is a report by the city attorney regarding the operation of dispensing facilities of medicinal marijuana and options available to the City of West Miami. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Rodriguez. And item G is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, pertaining to establishing a temporary moratorium for 180 days for the effective, from the effective date of this resolution on the acceptance, review, approval, or issuance of any land development permit, as the term is defined in Florida statutes, section 163, 3164, 16, business tax receipts, or any other license or permit for the establishment or operation of dispensing facilities within the city engaged in the on-site distribution, sale, delivery, or retail of low THC cannabis, medical cannabis, or cannabis delivery devices pursuant to section 381986 and 4990295 of the Florida statutes. In order to provide the city with an opportunity to review the new cannabis bill, SBA, third engrossed compassionate Medical Cannabis Act, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for severability review of conflicting resolution provisions, Mayor and City Commission.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
In 2014, the Florida Legislature enacted section 381.96, 986, the marijuana, marijuana law at the time. And then in 2016, the Legislature amended section 381.986 and amended it to be a compassionate marijuana, medical cannabis. And then on November 8, 2016, there was a referendum that was passed by the citizens of the state of Florida approving the miracle marijuana. On November 16, 2016, the City of West Miami enacted a, an ordinance imposing a 180-days moratorium for the city to be able to study what implication or what impact that statute had on the city. The problem is that this law, it's what I would call a sort of a yo-yo law. It goes up and down, and go back and forth, and so on and so forth. In June 9, 2017, the Florida Legislature amended what had been amended before, and the governor on June 9, in the Florida Legislature, on a special session, approved another amendment only 48 hours after it was presented. So it had been a, a up and down, and so on and so forth, and nobody knew what they wanted. So we would need another 180 days. By the way, I already drafted the first draft of a, an ordinance that would eventually do some effect on this particular issue. And I would encourage you to, after examining the ordinance that I had presented, to take into consideration to approve it.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Mr. Attorney, thank you for your due diligence on this once again.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no discussion, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay. Next item?
And we'll go now to 11B, and Mr. Penna will explain it to the commission. This was approved on first reading, and I'd like to be excused at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you might.
This is a public hearing, so if you could read it into the record.
Yes, item 11B, second reading, public hearing, and ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, ratifying and reaffirming ordinance 2015-01 of the City of West Miami, passed and adopted January 15, 2015, vacating, abandoning, and closing the road designated at Southwest 21st Street between Southwest 66th Avenue and Southwest 67th Avenue, Exhibit A. An ordinance 2015-07 of the City of West Miami passed and adopted September 2, 2015, amending and adding an additional 25 feet of such Southwest 21st Street to confirm with a corrected survey, Exhibit B, providing for an acceptance of an amended request for the correction of a script nurse omission of an area from the amended vacation of Southwest 21st Street to confirm with a survey attached here too as Exhibit C, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, basically when the, when the surveyor did the second map, that they added the additional 25 feet, they left out the radius of the curb on the north side of the, the block. So that is what we're including now to vacate the complete Southwest 21st Street.
Okay. And?
Motion.
Any, no, any further clarification? Okay. Open the public hearing.
Go.
Anybody wants to speak on the subject? Close the public hearing, back to the table. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Unless there's any other requests, I would like to go to the origin of the...
Original order, Mr. Mayor?
Original order of the agenda, please.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Mayor, I don't have a written report, however, I would like to commend the City of West Miami staff for their work in preparation and during the Fourth of July event. I know that you'll probably talk about the event, but I want to commend staff. Juan, your staff, Pete, your staff, and your admin staff. I mean, this, this event is, just takes a massive undertaking for preparations to ensure the safety and well-being of our motorists, our pedestrians, the children. I want to thank John Michael Lopez. I think this is his first debut as, as director, as the permanent director to the recreation center. And again, Carrie, my assistant, for putting this together, and I wanted to commend those. And I'm preparing at the request of the mayor, a letter that will go out to all those who worked. The mayor will be signing that tomorrow, and it should go out on Friday with their payroll, thanking them for a job well done, once again.
Thank you.
Can't forget Mr. Q. Mr. Q did a great job.
Of course, Mr. Q, we can never leave him out. He's very much a part of everything now.
Okay. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney, non this evening. Item seven, report of city engineers, non this evening. Item eight, and the committee reports, report of the mayor?
Yes, ditto. Absolutely. The Fourth of July celebration was a total success, but we cannot forget that that cannot be done without the participation of all the staff, all the hard work that happened prior to this event and during this event. By the way, I observed something really interesting with John Michael Lopez. He, did I say the right last name?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. There was a kid that, I mean, he got so excited that he started, you know, spinning around the bars and so on, and he actually burned his, two of his fingers, you know, with friction. So he went out there and went to the first kid and brought in, you know, whatever, new scoring or whatever it was, and...
His first aid kid.
First aid kid, and took care of the kid. So, and, and he was in the middle of shopping a watermelon, and so he took off and, you know, did that. So, and of course, you know, of course, Mr. Q and the rest of the people that worked so hard putting this event together, I really wanted to thank you from my behalf. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Totally agree.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay. Next item, please.
Mayor, under committee reports, special presentations, item B, is a exchange of city keys between the City of West Miami and the town of Medley. This item was brought at the request of the mayor's office from the town of Medley while you were out of the country. So it was put on the agenda just tentatively and was left there. We contacted the office of the mayor of Medley, and, and we advised them that there is a procedure on, in the City of West Miami that takes ceremonial items must be approved by the city commission. So they are aware of that, and they, and this will be scheduled upon your approval at a later date.
The only thing I ask at this time, that if you could place it on the next agenda, so we can discuss.
The request.
Request.
Okay, on the July 19 meeting. Okay, Mr. Mayor. Next item, item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations. Under item, under unfinished business, item 10A, this is a nomination of members, and alternate members to the charter review board by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay. I myself have a member that I checked with him, and somebody that is very familiar to you, and that will be Joe Paz. That will be my member, and I'm still checking for the alternate. I don't have one yet.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have one as well. That will be Antonia Chavez, or Tony Chavez. I've spoken to her, and she is, she's delighted.
We know Tony. This is the first time I heard somebody call Antonia.
I want to put Antonia for the record, but it is Tony. And I've been after her for some time now to become more involved. So she finally agreed with me, so I'm very excited that she'll be part of the charter review.
She will be good. Anybody else has a nomination?
Commissioner Suarez?
I've been trying to get in contact with some person, but it was in vacation, and I have to wait that the person is back.
Okay. Anybody else?
I nominate Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes. Yes, Ms., the vice mayor at the June 21 meeting nominated Eugenio Gonzalez, and Commissioner Blanis nominated Ralph Orrell. So we have four members already, only one member left.
Orell.
Orrell. Orrell.
Orell.
In Spanish, Orell. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I, and I'm sure the clerk is going to be diligent enough to do this, but may I ask you to continue this item on your future agendas and unfinished business until we have a complete board? Now, time is of the essence, because I know that there is, and this is her area, but I think she reported, and you may have been out at the last meeting, where we have to have meetings within a specific timeframe because of your charter requirements. So if you could please go back and think about your, for those that have nominated your members, think about appointing your alternate members at the next meeting. And Commissioner Suarez then will bring both nominations, so that we can proceed on that agenda, calling the first organizational meeting, if that's in your immediate radar, so that we can address the issues of the timeline in the charter.
Okay. I agree.
So at the next meeting of July 19, we, you can nominate the rest of the charter review board, so we can proceed.
The following meeting is when? The 19?
The 19th of July. July 19, please.
Okay.
August, right?
No, no.
No, no, July 19. And then the first meeting in August is canceled. The second one is August 16.
Okay. Next item?
Under unfinished business, item 10B, this is a report by Commissioner Luciana Suarez on Airbnb, meaning vacation rentals. This is an item that is sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez?
Well, this is in reference to the rental. And the point is this, that Miami Beach, they make the resolution before 2011. After 2011, the state took jurisdiction all over the state, of course, about this rental and about this. So no city in the state can do any law, municipal law, municipal regulations about that. We have to wait for the county. I know Commissioner Heyman and another, I think, Sosa also is involved in, in prepare regulations about this, this. Especially will be about taxes and permits. They have to, they have to obtain a permit, and they have to get an agreement with the company who rented. So the company have to get a license, and then they, when they rent, we would know who we rent, where we rent, so will be taxed over the property, no longer than 30 days, because if they rent the property over 30 days, the owner will lose the homestead exception. So we have to wait until the county finish their ordinance to see what we can do, because the state do not allow to the cities to make any kind of restrictions. That's the point.
So that's, that's your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is then item 11, under new business agenda item, item 11A. This is a second reading, a public hearing, and ordinance of the City of West Miami, amending chapter 10, section 105J, construction or repairing of buildings prohibiting the erection, demolition, alteration, or repair to any building between the hours of 7:00 p.m. through 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, Saturday, the hours of 7:00 p.m. through 9:30 a.m., and allowing Sundays from 12 noon to 6:00 p.m. Amending section 105O, pile drivers, hammers, et cetera, prohibiting the use of any such equipment between the hours of 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, Saturday, the hours of 7:00 p.m. through 9:30 a.m., and allowing Sundays from 12 noon to 6:00 p.m. Amending section 105Q, landscaping equipment and power tools prohibiting the use of any such equipment between the hours of 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, Saturday, the hours of 7:00 p.m. through 9:30 a.m., and allowing Sundays from 12 noon to 6:00 p.m., providing for severability, inclusion in the code, and an effective date, Mayor and City Commission. And this item was advertised in the newspaper of general circulation following statutory requirements.
Okay, let's do something. I'm going to open this item to a public hearing after Mr. Penna speaks, and then we'll bring it back to the table to discussion and hopefully to come to some conclusion.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the, the hours that are here now, it's what's proposed, and I believe the only one that submitted proposes to the clerk was Commissioner Luciana Suarez. I don't have an objection to any of the hours that he's put on here. The only request that I have is, is this going to include city workers?
Well, rather than a question, I have a question back to you.
Sure.
Can you work with those hours, or do you have any different suggestion?
Long as I've been involved in this, and as long as, and every other city that I've asked, municipal employees are exempt from zoning requirements. This is a zoning requirement.
Okay. I, I understand the, the answer, me personally. I'm sitting on the fence on this one. I, I understand. I, I, I understand.
Well, let, let me put you an example. Right now, the recreation center, unbeknown to you all, we start cutting that park at 5:30 in the morning.
Okay.
Because at 7:00 a.m. we have kids there. We can't cut that park until nine o'clock at night that they leave. So, when do we cut the park?
Okay. I have a further, another question. Have you had any complaint from the neighbors in reference to the service to the park?
No.
Okay. All right. That answers my question.
I, I think the only complaint came from the area of Cooper Park.
Correct.
And it was, wasn't cutting grass, it was a blower.
Correct.
It was a power, a powered tool.
The blowers are really loud, especially, you know, the professional grade type blowers that we use and, you know, the landscapers use. Those are, I think those are the loudest pieces of equipment, right, Mr. Penner?
Yep.
So, I think...
We've modified our, our, our hours. Now, we use an electric blower at Cooper Park.
Which means that the noise...
There's no motor noise, it's just wind noise. It's very, it's much more quieter than, than the regular.
And it's efficient and practical?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Great. Problem solved.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That complaint about Cooper, if, if my recollection serves me correctly, came after we initiated it by sending out that memo to the residents.
Right.
Because prior to that, I don't think the residents even knew we had anything on the books and life was going on as normal. People were cutting their yard and blowing their grass whenever they saw fit, which I believe, and I believe it probably was working for the neighbors because over the years, no one complained, ever. Which brings me, I thought about this a lot after, after, you know, all this came out. So, I'm thinking if it's not broke, why fix it? Why do we have to? And I, I make, you know, I, I proposed my hours here, but I gave it some thought after that and I'm thinking, why do we even have to have a lawn service ordinance on the books? For how many years have people been cutting their grass when they, when they, when they see fit? And it's, it's never been a problem. And if it were to become a problem, I'm sure we could handle it on an individual case basis. I just think this is, we're always talking about quality of life and, you know, I, I believe that by us mandating to our residents when they can, can and should cut their yard is somewhat restrictive. So, and, and this, the difference of times is very confusing. I mean, if I didn't sit here and study it and, and hear, and continuously hear about it, I'd be very confused by this, you know, who's on first, who's on second, who's on third? When can I cut my yard? Can I cut it and trim it on different days, different times, you know?
Well, I'll, I'll give you my, my personal opinion on it. My personal opinion on it, and I know not everybody has impact resistant windows, but I can tell you, the day that I installed the impact resistant, or they installed the impact resistant windows in my house, I couldn't sleep because of the silence. And to this day, to this day, they could be cutting the grass in the back of the house, on the side of the house. I have barking dogs. I don't hear them. I have loud music after hours. I, I, as a matter of fact, I have come home late and I hear the music and the minute I, you know, I go into my house, I, I can't even, I, I have to like really, really, really pay attention to hear. But again, and I, I know more people are installing impact windows and, you know, every day. So, that...
I believe the construction and the, the, the music, that, that is very important. That should remain. But I just feel we shouldn't be putting lawn service in the mix. You know, let's leave it with the construction and the, and the music, that's...
It's set right now at 9:30.
I, I was, would, I would recommend we move, remove it completely.
Okay. One, one, one at a time, one at a time. Commissioner Rodriguez, you're done?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have Commissioner Blanis next.
Okay. Not everybody has hurricane resistant windows and not everybody has the tolerance to noise. People are very, very different and some have their preferences and some have not their preferences. So, you know, we can't say here and just say, because I personally don't think there's anything wrong, assume that there isn't going to be something wrong.
You're absolutely right.
Because, you know, we, we can't rationalize like that. We're, we're off base by thinking that way, first of all.
You're, you're right.
I, I want to make that point. You know, I, I, I've also thought a lot about this and I was thinking to myself, you know, if we come up with a scheme of, of, of time where it would be eight, nine, 10, eight weekdays, nine Saturdays, and 10 Sundays. I think that's very, very reasonable, eight, nine, 10. That's an easy way to remember. We can put it on the internet, we can send another blast email, we can, you know, the do's and don'ts, but, you know, and, and this pertains not so much towards our residents, but to the professional lawn cutting services, in particular in the commercial areas. I know that there's, there's two, two, two companies that go and do the Inter American Bank on 57th Avenue and 11th Street and right next door, the medical building. I mean, these people show up at 7:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning and it's not just one blower, it's two blowers going. You know, that, that disturbs the quality of life of the residents, at least on that block. I hear it in my house. And you know what? I don't have hurricane resistant windows. I have double glass windows with gas inside and I still hear.
Insulated.
Yeah. And, and I, and I still hear. So, I can imagine, you know, the people living right next door and, you know, a, a lot of times, a lot of times consequently, just like, just like in the, when we had the commercial garbage pickers, collectors that would come at three o'clock, at four o'clock in the morning to that bank every Tuesday or every Thursday and they would pick it up and it would disturb, you know, people's sleep. I had, there's two residents on 11th Street that, that told me, oh, well, I didn't know, I, I, I wasn't sure if I could call and, and complain. I thought there was just nothing that I could do about it. A lot of times residents assume that way and think that way, that there's really nothing they can do about it. Well, you know what? That's why we sit here. That's why I sit here. That's why, you know, this position is very, very important to me, to make sure that all the residents here can have the best possible quality of, quality of life. And you know what? This is a very quiet city for where we stand, for where we are in the map. This is a very quiet city. We don't have issues with loud, you know, noise with, with, you know, people doing mechanical work, you know, drinking outdoors, carrying on. Why? Because we have our own police department, we've got our own code enforcement department, and we have these rules and regulations on the book that if the incident arises, then we can do something about it. But if we don't have anything, then you know what? We don't have a leg to stand on. And then the residents will say to us, why aren't you doing something about it? So, you know what? It's just like having one more tool in the box. I think that this should be kept in the books. I think that the time should be modified. I think that eight, nine, 10 is very reasonable. So...
What is it that we have currently in the ordinance?
9:30.
Monday through Saturday and noon to 6:00 p.m. Sundays, correct, Mr. Penner?
Yes.
We, yeah, we included that, the, the, the lawn because of the construction and we sort of like, I don't know how many years ago and, or why, I don't know the rhyme or reason.
2012, wasn't it?
2012, why we included. But, but I, I, I think that, I think that eight o'clock for weekdays, nine o'clock for Saturdays, and 10 o'clock for Sundays. That's, that's very reasonable. That's very reasonable, you know? People, people work, you know, people want to sleep till eight, nine o'clock on a Saturday or, or on a Sunday till like, you know?
Okay. So, we talked...
Eight, nine, 10.
That, that's your proposal. So, let's, let's move.
Okay.
What about, okay, that's in the morning. What about sundown or are we talking about?
I would stay away from sundown as I see on this form and basically because as you saw yesterday, sundown at the rec center was at 8:30 at night.
Exactly.
Right.
I, I don't think it's so much more important, the, the later part of the day than the, than the, I think the most important part is the beginning of the day.
What's?
When people are sleeping, resting, you know, that's, that's the time where people, you know?
Right now, it's 7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m.?
I...
And six on Sundays.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up question. Weekdays, obviously it'll be a code compliance. Who will be, who will be enforcing this, correct?
Hmm.
Who's going to enforce it on the weekends? Do we really want our police department enforcing code compliance?
Sure.
Do we really want our police officers knocking on the doors because you're mowing your lawn too early?
Well, no, we're...
In my opinion, that, that's...
I was referencing them, but for, for the professionals, not for the, not for the...
I, I mean, I don't want my police officers knocking on doors.
We have, and, and if I may interject, Commissioner, and I don't mean to butt in, but it's important that if we don't have staff in the office Saturday and Sunday unless there's an emergency, obviously all those calls go to the police department. And so, if a call comes to the police department, I think they have a duty to respond. Is that correct, Chief?
Correct.
And so, it's not like call back on Monday and we're referred to code enforcement. I think the department has a duty to provide a service to the resident and look into the complaint.
Whether we have an ordinance or not.
These women and women sworn to protect our lives and we're going to send them out on a lawn service call? That just doesn't sit right with me somehow.
No, 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 no. Don't put it that way. Because it's not like that at all. It's, it's to assist the resident. If you have a resident, the call at seven o'clock gets woken up by a, by a professional lawn service, they start blowing the lawn at seven o'clock and this person wakes up and, and says, wow, seven o'clock, they're not supposed to be doing this till, till nine or 10. 10, let's say it's a Sunday. You know what? That's why we have the police department. If they are not busy on, on, on a critical call, you know what? They will respond. It's going to take them a minute or less to tell the lawn service, hey, listen, you can't do this till 10 o'clock. Make a note on your little notepad there that you can't, on Sundays, you can't do this till 10 o'clock. On Mondays, nine o'clock and on weekdays, eight o'clock. And you know what? If, if, if the guy's conscientious, it'll never happen again.
By, by the way, I'm the one who called about the dogs this morning, 8:30 in the morning, the, the two huge dogs that were roaming around. I'm the one who called.
Well, that's different. You have dogs roaming around, that's different.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
I know. We never heard complaints about this until...
Correct.
Until according with our lady email, the Facebook of the city just put the hours and the times of many things in the city. So, the millennial generation is working, even that lady I referenced is millennium or what it is. But the Facebook, you are a cybernetic person. The Facebook is working. So, she got in Facebook, oh, my God, the time, Facebook there. So, after that, I tell you, now I understand Mr. Penner is going to be ordering batteries, no internal combustion blowers. So, he's going to be silent.
We have two.
Now, that's it. Now, number three, when Mr. Ronda, the police is not, the police destroy the doors of the people.
They destroy the doors.
When there is a party, they allow music to call the police.
I totally agree with that.
The police, very, very gentle, go there, please, can you? So, the same thing, the police do that job in the evening, our, our beautiful and very gentle and very civilized police department go in the morning and tell the people, would you please, this is not the time for cutting grass because of noise? Or the city in Facebook may put a note according with you to buy a no internal combustion battery, a blower, or the machinery to cut the grass.
I don't think we should suggest to our residents.
Mr. Penner said that this exists.
It's, it's a public service.
Okay.
And, and that's why we have a police department, just for that.
Okay, okay, okay. Listen, we, we...
Mr. Penner has something to say.
Not just for that, but...
Mr. Penner has something to say.
Hold on, hold on. We could be here all night. Let's not get passionate about it. Let's, 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 let's play with the numbers back and forth, let's agree on something and move on and...
I like this.
Eight, nine, 10.
Eight, nine, 10.
That's easy.
It's a nice ring to it.
Eight, nine, 10.
Mr. Penner.
It's reasonable.
Mr. Penner.
It's, it's reasonable.
I like the commissioner's, eight, nine, 10.
Okay.
Eight weekdays, Saturdays at nine and Sundays at 10.
Okay. How about, how about the end of the day?
Seven p.m.
Seven p.m. across the board, including Sundays?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I like the uniformity, all the same, but that's just me.
It's easier to remember.
Make it easy. It's easy to remember.
Okay. So, seven, seven p.m. across the board, okay.
I'm talking the morning too. I like the same time. It's easier that way. That's just me. Same time.
I, I, I like to be the devil's advocate. I mean, seven p.m. Sunday, I think is a little late, so...
No, I'm talking mornings, mornings versus having eight, nine, 10, I like...
No, no, no. The morning, so far it looks like the morning we might be in agreement. I'm talking about the end of the day. Because they can't work all night.
Yeah, I don't think that the day is...
Well, like I said, the, the end of the day is not so important. People don't go to sleep at seven o'clock, at eight o'clock, or nine o'clock, you know?
Unless, unless you're a firefighter and then you came home.
To me, the important, the crucial time here is mornings when people are resting, when people are sleeping. That is the time that people are going to be aggravated by some kind of noise. But at seven p.m., at eight p.m., you know, everybody's up, you know? I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's 11 o'clock and somebody's out there with a blower...
With their, with their flashlight.
Well, I don't know. Sundays are sacred to me, so I'm proposing Sunday to be...
Six p.m.
Yeah. Either, I would go for five. I mean, five...
Well, daylight hours. I mean, we, you know, it's daylight till late.
Yeah.
Again, if we're thinking about residents...
That's what I'm, I'm putting on the table. I mean, I'm, I'm for discussion.
I'm thinking more of, I'm sorry, I'm thinking more of not the lawn service companies, but your residents. If you work Monday through Friday and you cut your own lawn, you know, you might want to cut your lawn.
You get home at five.
You get home at five, you know, you're going to, again, I'm not, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking of lawn, lawn service companies. I'm thinking of your residents.
And you have daylight, yeah.
Thinking of our residents, not lawn service companies.
I, I agree with the commissioner.
Or you could be pumping concrete.
Exactly.
Okay. Are we, are we keeping those hours for construction as well?
Yes.
Is that, is that the idea?
Across the board.
Yes.
I think so, so we don't confuse people.
Eight, nine, and 10, correct?
Yes.
I...
Well, so far.
And the end of day?
I'm sorry?
End of day is what?
Seven and then six on Sundays.
Seven and six.
Saturday?
Saturday is seven p.m.
Eight, nine, 10, seven, 10.
Let me clarify. According with, with the proposition is seven...
No. Eight, nine, 10.
Eight, nine, 10.
Very musical. And the mega bowl is seven. Right? Eight, nine, 10, and seven, right? Simple, Mr. Penner. Simple, Mr. Pennant.
Yes, sir.
I agree with that. That's it.
That's it, you're a winner.
Okay, any takers on, on the earlier Sunday?
I'd like to sit across the board, same time.
Okay.
That's just me.
That's you. Okay, Commissioner Blanis.
I'm not talking in the day, I'm talking at the beginning of the day.
Yeah, at the end of the day, Sunday.
Um, I'm, I'm up to say seven. That way it's just...
Okay, so let's move.
And it's only one hour.
Let's move forward. All right, the proposition on the table, and then of course, somebody has to make a motion before we open, we gotta open the public hearing. We never opened the public hearing. No, we never...
No, Mr. Pennant.
Right. Open the public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Close the public hearing. Back to the table. Uh, proposition is eight, nine, ten.
I'd like to hear from, from the chief, if he's got anything to add to this. There's a lot of wisdom and experience that might add to this conundrum here.
I think those times, the eight, nine, ten are okay. My question is, we get the, the complaint and one of our officers goes out and the guy says, I got a job to do. We can enforce the municipal civil sil- isolation. Now we're going over to the county where we're gonna end up arresting this guy for a noise violation.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what, can, can we later come and, and, and report to code enforcement, these guys violated it, and then it would be taken care of that way?
They would send a notice to the homeowner.
Right, the homeowner will be cited and, and...
It's up to them to correct it with their landscape.
Right, yeah, that's...
That's the only thing.
Okay, that's a pretty good comment, actually. Good observation. Uh, okay, so we're talking about the times. Eight, nine, ten.
Seven.
Seven.
And seven on the top. Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis, how's your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
My colleagues, I'm sorry, I can't go on this one, no.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
For one item passes.
Okay, next item.
Next item would be item...
Okay, hurry up, you're losing me.
Yeah.
I'm six hours ahead of schedule. It's supposed to be in bed.
Moratorium.
Gee.
You want a pastry? You want a French pastry on macaroons?
New business agenda.
We was taking already, uh, from when the city attorney was here.
Oh, yes.
Was heard already.
That is.
But was it passed the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Five O vote.
Eleven is now, eleven eight.
Uh, no.
Just to make sure, Mr. Mayor. So all the items have been heard. Next item will be then eleven H. The annual evaluation of the city clerk by mayor and city commission.
Um, I was ready for these items, uh, earlier today. Now I'm really tired. Eh, do we wanna take those items right now, or do you wanna defer the items? Do we have time for, for those items? I'm asking.
Defer.
If you're not up to it, if you're still in French time, we can defer.
Well, I think it's an important item, uh, and, 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 and like I said, I was ready, but I, I think this is an item that, that needs to, I, I hate that we leave this item for the end, because I think this is an important item, both for, for the clerk and the city manager.
The best always comes for last. We save the best for last, yeah.
We'll whip it to the beginning next time.
We go out with the big bang.
Whip it to the beginning. I'm fine with deferring, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It's, it's at your pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm ready, I shoot from the hip, so I'm...
Up to you. What is your problem with this item?
No problem. No problem at all. All I said is, it deserves, uh, full attention. That's all I said.
And a lot of attention.
And, and you don't have my full attention right now, I'm sorry.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, this is the...
We're for the next meeting, defer.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the time of year, we bring this to you only because of our budget plans. However, the preliminary budget is simply a preliminary budget. It is not until your tentative budget hearing and your final budget hearing in September that these projections are obviously voted on.
Okay, before, before I make a recommendation, when, when is our first hearing of the budget?
The preliminary submittal is July nineteenth.
July nineteenth.
The next meeting.
Okay, so then we should discuss this item today then? We don't have a, 'cause you need to contemplate that in the budget, correct?
It's the ideal scenario, but if you are not ready to tackle it tonight, we can let it go. We usually do all the amendments during the month of August, and then we come back to you and tell you in September, um, you know, based on your input, our meetings, which will start with you individually next week, how we're approaching all these matters that need to be brought to consideration as part of the budget.
Okay.
So we can wait.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I would like to defer those two items, item H and item I.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I believe that the July sixteenth meeting is the agenda. I'm sorry, the nineteenth is pretty packed right now, um, Madam Clerk, or...
We have a public hearing so far.
Yeah, we have the tentative military adoption and all the items that go, that follow trim notices. Aside from that, I believe we have a, uh...
Another public hearing.
Another public hearing, so...
Okay, let's do it tonight. Okay, you, you, all right.
Now, I...
No, no, I, I'm just telling you so that you can decide to tell...
Now we're prepared for the next meeting then.
Or, or maybe even August sixteenth, and, and that would be another recommendation. We can let it go, August sixteenth, the last week of August, we basically do the last-minute reports.
We can do it.
Next meeting is fine as well.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Eleven A, you defer eleven A?
Eleven A?
Yeah, this was not discussed.
What do you mean? We, we discussed that.
Eleven A, new business, eleven A, because B was, that was the...
Yes, we did.
I totally talk.
It was the noise ordinance.
Eleven A was the noise ordinance.
Lawn service and the new time.
You made a motion.
But it's also talking about the construction.
It's everything.
It's all together. It's all together.